Yes, the first one is 017, the second one is 018.
Okay.
I will call the meeting of the McHenry County Zoning Board of Appeals to order. If everyone would please just stop talking, that'd be good, so we can proceed.
They're going to speak up a little bit or put the microphone over to the side.
Okay. The first item on our agenda for our voting meeting is application 2023-017. The applicant is ASD Seneca Illinois Solar LLC. It is part of PIN number 12-33-300-004. The property consists of approximately 41.851 acres located on the north side of Ocock Road, approximately one-half mile east of the intersection of Ocock and Dunham Roads in Seneca Township, and the request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial solar energy facility. So we have some proposed conditions by staff. I will go through those. Number one, the conditional use shall have no time limit unless the use is abandoned as specified in 16.56.030.PP.4 of the McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance. Number two, site development shall be in substantial conformance with the site plan prepared by AMP Energy on May 2, 2023. Number three, the decommissioning plan shall be applicable in part as well as in whole. If any portion of the commercial solar energy facility ceases to perform its intended function for more than 12 consecutive months, that portion of the facility shall be decommissioned in compliance with all the terms of the decommissioning plan. Number four, a McHenry County stormwater management permit shall be secured prior to construction. Any damaged drainage tiles shall be repaired at the expense of the petitioner and in a manner satisfactory to the Water Resources Division Manager. Number five, a detailed landscape plan illustrating compliance with required landscape screening standards shall be approved by the zoning enforcement officer prior to issuance of construction/building permit. Number six, fencing shall be provided in compliance with the National Electrical Code as applicable. The use of barbed wire is prohibited. Setting fence posts in concrete is prohibited except for gateposts and where otherwise required for stability. Number seven, all requirements of the McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance...
You skipped the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we have deleted number seven from here.
Oh, we deleted, okay.
So number seven is now all requirements of McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance 16.56.030.PP as amended, subject to State of Illinois Public Act 102-1123, shall be met or exceeded unless specifically amended by this conditional use permit. Number eight, all other federal, state, and local laws shall be met. Now I'll just mention that one condition that we had in there initially that was deleted is based on discussion with the state's attorney that that is already taken care of prior to the hearing, so we don't need to add it again into the conditions.
Madam Chairman, I move acceptance of the conditions as presented.
I'll second. It has been moved by Mr. Eldridge and seconded by Ms. Gardner to accept the conditions as proposed by staff. Does anyone have any additional conditions they'd like to add? Any discussion on these conditions? And I'll call for the vote. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Ms. Beverly?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the conditions are approved, seven to zero. Now I would entertain a motion.
I will move acceptance of the petition, subject to the conditions.
I'll second. It's been moved by Mr. Eldridge, seconded by Ms. Gardner to approve this petition discussion. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes. Subject to the new state law that took effect in January, pursuant to the new state law that took effect in January, the county is required to approve any petitions for solar, for commercial solar, which meet the state conditions in that law. I find that they have met those conditions, and therefore it is the obligation of this board to accept the petition. I therefore will be voting in favor of it.
Ms. Gardner?
I agree with Mr. Eldridge. Although this property is fairly close to a residential area, there is a deep setback. There should be no interference with noise, or with traffic, or anything else. It's a very cast of sight, and I will vote for approval.
Mr. Schnabel?
I agree with what's been said so far. I know that the nearby homeowners have issues with the water permeability, and they're very concerned about aquifer contamination, and I believe they're having ongoing discussions with the county. That being said, the petitioner does meet the requirements, and I will intend to support it at this point.
Mr. Cozen?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. With the information presented to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and looking at both the standards of the recently enacted requirements of the state, as well as the conditional use of the zoning application, I too will be supporting this petition.
Ms. Beverly?
Thank you. I agree with what's been said. There's been additional screening that's been offered by the petitioner to help with any site concerns on this property. Solar is a ag zoning use under our ordinance, and I think that this will not really result in additional traffic or anything like that once construction is completed, so I'm in favor of this petition.
And I agree with the members of my colleagues, their comments, so I'll call for the vote. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Ms. Beverly?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so this goes to the county board with a seven to zero vote approving. Give me one second here. No, Tom wasn't on that one.
He read...
Oh, he voted. Oh, I am so sorry.
Sorry.
I thought I had...
I just canceled a little note to my compatriot.
So that wasn't Jessica?
Jessica's on it as well, but Tom was the one.
I apologize, Tom.
Last but not least, I mean yourself.
Oh, my gosh, that was just awful of me.
No.
Well, first with the conditions. Did you vote on the conditions?
He didn't call me on the answer.
I know, so I'm asking now, how would you vote?
Yeah, I'll go with the conditions.
Here, I thought you were with the other ones.
I'm not...
And your comments on the petition, please.
I've got a few comments, and I've got mixed emotions about this. There's no time limit on the conditional use permit, in my opinion, and I'm not a lawyer, but in my opinion, a conditional use with no time limit is a zoning change, because none of us are ever going to live to see this thing decommissioned. So in effect, we've changed the zoning. The location, the proximity, the close neighbors, there are a lot of close neighbors there. I know lots of them. There's a subdivision with dozens and dozens of homes across the street. The city limits of the Village of Union are across the street. It will, you know, if the village wanted it, they had the opportunity to buy it when it was for sale. So they kind of, you know, if anybody else wanted it for development and subdivision, they had their opportunity, and they didn't. Begrudgingly, I'm going to vote yes, but I don't feel good about it, because I know Pritzker's forcing us to do this. So I'm voting yes, and I'm agreeing with you, but I don't like my vote.
Okay. So now it actually is a seven to zero vote.
Now you got your seven.
I better count my fingers. Kim, I don't have a sheet for conditions for 2018. Are they the same?
Yes. No, there was one different.
This is it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to petition number 2023-018. The applicant is ASD Coral Illinois Solar LLC. The request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial solar energy facility. It's part of PIN number 17-03-300-008, part of 17-03-400-004, and part of PIN number 17-10-200-001. The property consists of approximately 27.177 acres and is located on the south side of Hemmingson Road, approximately 4,750 feet west of the intersection of Hemmingson Road and McHugh Roads in Coral Township, Illinois. I will say before we move on to the conditions that we did receive a letter of objection yesterday, but the hearing had already been closed, so we are forwarding that on to the county board for their consideration. So staff offers the following conditions for consideration. The conditional use shall have no time limit unless the use is abandoned as specified in 16.56.030.PP.4 of the McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance. Number two, site development shall be in substantial conformance with the site plan prepared by AMP Energy on May 2, 2023. Number three, the decommissioning plan shall be applicable in part as well as in whole. If any portion of the commercial solar energy facility ceases to perform its intended function for more than 12 consecutive months, that portion of the facility shall be decommissioned in compliance with all the terms of the decommissioning plan. Number four, a McHenry County stormwater management permit shall be secured prior to construction. Any damaged drainage tiles shall be repaired at the expense of the petitioner and in a manner satisfactory to the Water Resources Division Manager. Number five, a detailed landscape plan illustrating compliance with required landscape screening standards shall be approved by the zoning enforcement officer prior to issuance of construction/building permit. Number six, fencing shall be provided in compliance with the National Electrical Code as applicable. The use of barbed wire is prohibited. Setting fence posts in concrete is prohibited except for gateposts and where otherwise required for stability. Number seven, recommendations made by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources in their August 4, 2022, letter to the applicants with regard to protected resources in the vicinity of the project location shall be followed. Number eight, all requirements of McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance 16.56.030.PP as amended, subject to State of Illinois Public Act 102-1123, shall be met or exceeded unless specifically amended by this conditional use permit. Number nine, all other federal, state, and local laws shall be met. Are there any other proposed conditions? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the conditions.
Madam Chairman, I move approval of the conditions as presented.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Then I will call for the vote. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Solinsky's not here. Ms. Beverly?
Yes.
And Mr. Jurz?
No.
And I will vote yes. Conditions are approved, six to one. At this time, I would entertain a motion on the petition itself.
I move acceptance of the petition, subject to the conditions.
Do I have a second? I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve this petition discussion. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes, as I said in the previous petition, the state law, which wanted to affect in January, requires us to approve any petitions for commercial solar that meet the new set of state standards. I find that they have met the state standards, and therefore I must, under state law, support this petition. I would like to add that this property happens to be adjacent to the Union Railway Museum, which is a treasure to the county and, in my view, to the state of Illinois, that the museum has requested additional screening, and I would strongly urge the petitioner to comply with that request. Failing to screen this appropriately from the museum and the tours that the museum gives on its right-of-way would be harmful to the entire region. Having said that, pursuant to state law, I will support the petition.
Mr. Jurz?
Coral Township planning, of which I'm a part of, has already come out opposed to this. I signed a letter to the township supervisor opposing it, so I'm not going to vote yes for it here. I'm going to vote no, and take the township's position to deny the petition.
Mr. Schnabel?
All right, I have some issues with this petition, and I'm going to try to limit it to where I feel they do not meet the approval standards. I feel that there are two particular areas where this petition does not meet the approval standards. In light of the fact, if any of you have gone to the intersection, which will be the means of egress across the two sets of tracks, I'd just like to make some observations. I went out there twice, once with someone else to get their opinion as well. And let me just say that the distance between, these are two separate independently operating sets of tracks, one for the Railway Museum and one for Union Pacific. The Railway Museum, I've been told, sets a lower speed limit in this particular area because it's a driveway access right now. It's very narrow, it's ungated, it's unsignalized. I believe that the first approval standard it does not meet is public safety, and I'll explain why. These trains on the Union Pacific side are going to be coming through much faster, and I'm not even going to discuss passenger rail. We won't even assume that that will ever happen like they were talking about. Leave that aside. If we bring flatbed semis in off of Hemmingson Road, where there's already an angle to Hemmingson Road, there's a fairly sharp angle there, flatbed semis hauling panels and support beams and whatnot, if they get up to that first track, which is basically just a stop sign, you have to actually get out of the cab and the truck, walk to the edge of the tracks to see if there's a train coming. You just, there's horrible line of sight there. Number two, assuming you pass that test and you cross to the next track, your trailer's probably going to be long enough to be parked on the Union Pacific line itself while you're looking to see if there's right-of-way clearance for the Illinois Railway Museum train, who may or may not know that you're there at that particular time. I see that as creating a great safety concern during the construction phase, initially at least, not to mention being unsignalized with no flashing light or bell or a gate or anything. Some bad accidents could happen as a result of that, and I beg us to remember that it was not that many years ago that there was an agricultural chemical tank operator that was crossing the tracks, or again, ungated, unsignalized, that got hit by a train, and unfortunately, that did not end up going well for them. So it's largely on that basis, and it may be ceremonial only at this point, but I wanted to raise the point, raise the issue, and to me, it's a serious concern, and I'm going to have to be a hard no on this petition as a result of that.
Ms. Gardner?
My concerns were with the Railway Museum as well, and that crossing. The egress crosses the tracks, and the Railway Museum was pretty adamant that they did not want this to happen. And I'm not sure that moving that egress would change anything in their opinion. I think they probably just don't want the solar farm to be there. As far as the safety standpoint, I have to agree with Mr. Schnabel. It is a pretty scary crossing right there. I agree with Mr. Eldridge. We don't really have a whole lot of choice here. However, we do have the choice on this board to vote no if we really feel it's not a good idea. It's probably going to pass anyway. Just to let you know, some of these will never be built. Some of these solar facilities will never be built. Can't hang my hat on that, but that's what I have. So I probably will vote no on this one.
Mr. Cozen?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The standards that we are given are those under the conditional use, under the zoning application. There are 10, of which excess plays a prominent role. A discussion of excess across a railroad line strikes deep to those of us in Algonquin Township recalling the tragedy that existed at the crossings of the Seven Angels in Foxer Grove. And given that memory and the difficulties that have arisen from that and still exist, as recently reported, I too will be voting no based on items number six and item seven.
Ms. Beverly?
Thank you. I agree with the concerns that have been expressed. I do know that just in granting a conditional use permit, they are subject to all other federal, state, and local laws. They will have to work with the railroad company to get an easement and meet substantial IDOT and make that safety compliance, and I trust that our excellent staff will handle that appropriately and ensure the safety of all involved during building construction should this facility be constructed. This petitioner did testify that 50 to 60% of all conditional use permits approved for solar farms will never be built in this county. Pursuant to this state law, I am in favor of the petition, and I will rely and defer to the staff with regard to the safety concerns of the railway.
And I'm a little mixed on this, given the concerns with the crossing of the railway as well. So we'll leave it at that. So I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
No.
Mr. Cozen?
No.
Mr. Schnabel?
No.
Ms. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
No.
And I will vote yes. We'll go to the county board with no recommendation. On a four to three vote. And then the county board will be able to discuss this and decide, and take into account the letter of objection we received yesterday, and then they can make their determination. So that is the end of 2023-018. So now we'll move on. Okay, so now we are going to move on to petition 2023-025. This is a continuation of this hearing. The petitioner was asked several questions and said they would come back with some answers to questions raised by members of the board and members of the public. So I would, again, if you have a new witness that was not sworn in before, I would ask anyone that did not get sworn in before to raise your right hand if you were going to ask any questions today, or if you're going to make any statements. Do you affirm that the testimony you were about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Okay. I will turn it over to you. Again, please introduce yourself, and then I will let you present the rest of your evidence.
Hi, I'm Nikki Miller with New Energy Equity, here to provide additional information for Wildcat Solar One. This is a 5-megawatt community solar project being proposed for the site off of North Coming Road in McHenry County. Kim, did we have the additional... Do you have the copy or the slides of the additional information that we've...
I didn't get anything.
No, the ones that you posted on the agenda. There were links with... No, maybe we didn't. So we had provided links to the... There were some concerns regarding our fire safety and emergency response plan, so we had provided those documents. They are on the agenda. There were links to those. Yeah, okay, no, that's fine. So we just provided the appendix L from our application to support our emergency response plan. I don't know if you want me to go through all of the pages that we have, or how you want.
It's up to you, what you want to do.
Okay.
I mean, you said that you would bring information to be...
Yep.
So it's up to you to provide.
Sure. So, well, just as an introduction to this emergency response plan that's done for the site is, New Energy Equity is committed to the safety and health of all of our workers and contract personnel and visitors to our sites and work locations. Our continuing objective to provide safe work conditions and practices at all of our work locations is our highest priority, and we acknowledge that, right? We acknowledge the right all workers have to safe and healthy work environment. The objective of this ERP or emergency response plan is to detail practices designed to address potential impacts from construction and operation of New Energy Equity's community solar project. The ERP plan provides guidance to construction, operations, contractors, and... operations, contractors, and field personnel on measures to minimize effects during construction and operation activities associated with the project. The emergency response plan is quite extensive. There are several sections that refer to what the chain of command is with our compliance for the ERP plan. There is an emergency response coordinator, and competent and qualified persons will ensure that they're capable of carrying out an effective emergency response prep plan. We don't get into specific details as we're not the experts. The contractors will be the ones to advise exactly what the process will be. But the contractors will then develop that written emergency plan in accordance with applicable federal, state, and local emergency response regulations and standards. And the plan will be incorporated into the contractor's project safety plan, and we'll train all contractor representatives on the provisions of the emergency response plan. So they will work in conjunction with the local law enforcement and fire department to execute said plan. So there's also a fire prevention component. I know there was some discussion regarding solar facilities being potential fire hazards. In my experience, we've not had fires at any of our gardens that are in operation, but we never know what's going to happen. So there is a plan in place for the contractors to include this fire safety plan and to train all contractor representatives on the provisions of the FSP. And again, would be consistent with all state and local regulations, and would be inspected. All fire equipment will be inspected monthly by the emergency coordinator, and there would be fire prevention training provided to all personnel working at the project site. Just keep scrolling down here, see what else we have. And then the emergency reporting, again, with the local fire department and law enforcement. So I don't know if you want me to keep going to the next item or if you want to...
Yeah, whatever else you want.
Okay, sure. So that's our emergency response plan. We provided our spec sheets for the solar modules. There was concern regarding cadmium being inside of our solar panels. Oh, I think that's...
What for?
It is... That's okay. It's a lot of... Yeah, that's the transformer, and that's the inverter. There we go. We'll go back down. There you go. There. So the solar module, that's what it looks like. It's a bifacial solar panel, and it is mainly consistent of... If you scroll down, it'll show... The frame is made of aluminum and silicone and the glass. There's aluminum, silicone, glass, plastics, some metals, or some less than a percentage of lead, which is considered a hazardous material, but it's a very minute amount that's included inside of that panel. So for the most part, the panels are non-hazardous materials. No cadmium in panels that are created. At this time, this is not... It's not an industry standard any longer. And then we talked about... So we can skip through to the Living Year Solar So we talked about some of the noise being a concern, and just as a maximum noise from the equipment in the garden does not exceed 72 decibels from 200 feet away. You know, there's been extensive research done and testing for... These are utility scale, so that... I mean, our projects are even smaller. So the noise level is not a concern based on many, many studies that were done to solar fields. And just in my own personal experience, if you've ever been to a solar garden, you really can't hear anything if you're outside of the fence, especially if we're 150 feet away from the nearest resident. So that was that concern. And then one that I actually did not get a chance to provide to you was there was some concern about stray voltage. And I just want to share, Westwood, who is a contractor, civil engineer, they did a report in 2020 because there were some concerns in the state of Minnesota about stray voltage in dairy farms, animals. And so just to be clear, the definition of stray voltage is often applied imprecisely for the purpose of this report. They define stray voltage as either a neutral-to-earth voltage between two contact points accessible to animals or humans, or a metallic object-to-earth voltage resulting from the accidental or unintentional energization of a metal object. So an example of that would be when a cow receives an electrical shock while drinking from a water trough due to a poor electrical connection in the neutral wire at the service panel. And then an example of the other, the MOEVE, would be when a wire's insulation is worn through and the conductor makes contact with the metal enclosure while energizing the enclosure. So the causes of stray voltage, I mean, it is a thing. It's not something that is a concern with our systems. They've done numerous testing, and the conclusion is that photovoltaic plants do not cause stray voltage. Given the fundamental nature of large-scale solar plant designs, the codes governing their design, and the credentials of the many professionals engaged in their design review, construction, and testing, it is a firm opinion of Westwood Professional Services that any concerns associating solar PV plants with increased risk of stray voltage are baseless. What they said was is that stray voltage can happen, and it's usually in proper wiring on the property owner. So stray voltage isn't going to come from your neighboring property. It's going to come from something that's a problem within your parcel. So, you know, we're put through all kinds of testing and held to many federal and state regulations to make sure that these facilities are safe for the community. So... And if at any time it became unsafe, McHenry County has the ability to pull our permit, so that we would have to cease operation. And I think... Oh, oh, so property values. So I did share, I think you have the appraisal letter that was done for one of our sites in Virginia, Minnesota. And then I also included just property values in utility-scale solar facilities. Both of these studies show that as long as there's a setback from the proposed solar panels, and most of the site has good existing landscape for screening, which is the case in both of these projects, that there's little to no damage or reduction in property value. So you can read through that letter if you did want additional information. That's just supporting evidence that these solar facilities do not drastically reduce your property value by being a neighbor to a solar garden. I think that was all of the additional information that we had provided or have been asked for if the board had or committee has any other questions. I do have an engineer here with me today. If you did have additional questions regarding the civil design, we'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you. Questions on the board starting in order with Mr. Jurz?
Thank you. You talked about your fire protection program was all spelled out in detail. What fire district is this property in?
I'm sorry?
Greenwood.
Greenwood Township?
Greenwood Township Fire Protection District.
Yes.
Are they full-time or volunteer?
That I don't know. Steve, do you know?
Would you identify yourself, sir, if you're going to speak?
Sure. Steve, I think...
Do you need the...
Property owner. I believe, excuse me, I believe the fire department serving in around Woodstock do have full-time enrollment. I would not say...
So you don't know if Greenwood is volunteer or full-time?
I don't know.
Pretty small community.
Well, it covers a large area.
Right.
They have a volunteer fire department.
Okay, so volunteer. Has he volunteered, been trained in fighting fires in solar farms?
That would be something that they would set up prior to energization of the garden.
So you're going to have to train all these volunteers to fight fires in this stuff?
I would assume that training would be provided.
So you're going to pay for their training?
This is actually in the Woodstock Fire District. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so that is full-time.
It is full-time. It's my understanding that fire departments are trained in electrical fire fighting.
Have you ever smelled solar panels on fire?
No, I have not.
I have. Run like hell. And it'll produce a stink that'll travel a mile. Anyhow, getting away from the fire district and the miles, and whether they're volunteers or not. This lease, I understand these leases between the landowner and the solar company, 25 years?
Correct.
All right. But your time limit on the special use is like forever and ever. Why isn't it 25 years?
The special use permit?
Right.
I would not know. That would be something that the McHenry County Board would...
Again, a special use permit that runs forever is a zoning change, because none of us in this room are ever going to live to see the thing decommissioned unless you're in your teens, and I don't see any teenagers here. But in effect, it's a zoning change. How close is it to the village of Bull Valley?
That I don't know. We're within a mile of Woods... Or we're a mile outside of Woodstock, the city.
A mile outside of Woodstock, and how far from Bull Valley?
That I do not know.
Is staff... Is there letters from Woodstock or Bull Valley in approval of this?
We have not received any letters. That I can pull up the...
Is there been correspondence to Bull Valley and Woodstock about this incorporated?
Yes, they've both been notified. I actually did speak with someone from the city of Woodstock, and they said they had no objections. You can see on the land use map here, that gray designation, that would be the Bull Valley village limits there, so that is up close in this place. Our map is a little bit outdated, so it's possible there's been recent annexations, but that is what we're showing.
So it's not surrounded... Okay, this is new to me. It's not surrounded by ag property. It's surrounded by estate use. All the yellow is estate.
This is a future land use. Here's the surrounding, the current surrounding land uses.
Okay. So it has more neighboring estate neighbors than ag neighbors. Am I right?
Looks like about...
I can count lots of little yellow boxes up there, and only two or three big green ones. So you've got more estate properties than farm neighbors. Okay, that's another concern. Oh, you mentioned property values, ma'am, about a Minnesota study?
We had a study done in Virginia.
In Virginia.
And then I believe this other, the one that was provided.
In all your documents and your computer there, do you have an Illinois study?
I do not.
Okay. The out-of-state studies said values were unaffected. Is that what you said?
Correct.
Or minimally?
Minimally affected.
Minimally unaffected. For the past 35 years, I've been doing real estate, and if the values didn't change, I could almost guarantee you market time did. If it takes three months to sell a regular house with no solar panels for a neighbor, would it take six or 12 to sell one with a solar farm next door?
I do not know.
You don't know? All right. That's my questions. Thank you.
Ms. Krishna.
No questions.
Ms. Gardner. My only question was on the real estate values as well. The studies that you did, who performed those studies?
The group that we had was Kirkland Appraisals out of Raleigh, North Carolina.
Okay, they are in real estate then, basically?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Yeah, he's certified as a general appraiser in North Carolina and in Virginia.
Okay. Well, that's all I had. Thank you.
I did read when they had it up on the board, some of the studies that you quoted, and one of them was performed by University of California, Berkeley, and the University of Texas, Austin, that was a national study of several thousand appraisers nationwide and several tens of thousands of home sales over a considerable period of time, but also found no effect on real estate values nationwide over several tens of thousands of solar farms. I just wanted to note that for the record because I think it is important to note. Are you screening between this property and the residences nearby?
So there's existing tree line surrounding the entire parcel already. What we're intending to do is, in addition to that 50-foot pollinator buffer, we are going to support additional screening along Fleming Road on another two rows of coniferous trees to help alleviate any concerns regarding the viewscape off of Fleming Road, as we understand that's important to the community.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Mr. Cozen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Can we go back to the fire safety? Do you have the... Or did you identify the contractor that you, the company, used to prepare the plan?
We have not engaged in a contractor yet. The contractor that will be on-site doing the construction will be the ones to actually, to do the actual plan.
But you had guidelines prepared. You've submitted that, showed them on... Who was the author of those guidelines?
I believe we followed the regulations with the state on what's required for an emergency response plan. I don't believe that it was a specific contractor.
So it was prepared in-house?
Correct.
Is that a... The last question was the number of inverters, and this, as the plan submitted, showed a chain system. We confirm that there's 34 inverters on the site?
There are 34 inverters. I believe that is what the site plan says. Yeah, 34 inverters. And I did speak with our site designer, and they indicated that the 34 inverters are not at the end of every row. They're kind of spread, you know, throughout the system because there's clearly more than 34 rows there. But that is the number that is necessary to... For the size of a garden.
So that style of inverters is not the large scale that we would see with the larger equipment, hence the comments about the noise?
Correct.
It's also that these inverters use a communication system known as IPB6. At least that's in the cut sheet? And from limited understanding, IPB6 allows for multiple path communication... From limited understanding, IPB-6 allows for multiple path communications, so it can communicate fire operational more so than what we ordinarily expect today?
Yes, it will indicate if there's a fire, after a fire concern.
Or in operation?
In operation, due to, due to that.
And that the panels, going to the solar panels, you said they're silicon-based, and they're also bi-spatial, so that means that they can get raw energy on both faces?
Correct. Yep.
So they will be moving in terms of the sun?
They will, yes, they will track the sun. Correct.
And neither they nor the inverters will be operating after sunset or before sunrise?
That is correct.
And so that any attributable noise would not be occurring in that same time?
Correct.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Hey, I have a few. First, back to the real estate study. So these other, I mean, you had that one study done, that your company hired someone to do a study on real estate values, correct? And that's the one you mentioned?
That's correct.
And then the other ones that were highlighted on the screen were all independently done by universities that were third-party?
That's correct.
And they concurred on the impact, the minimal impact on the property values of the solar farm?
That's correct.
I have a question on the tree buffer on Fleming Road, that you said you would put two other rows of arborvitus along Fleming Road.
Yes.
Is that added to the site plan, or?
We have, we can add that to the site plan. I don't know that we, I don't think that it's on there as it is right now.
Can you clarify how we would handle that?
Yeah, if you choose to add a condition that they increase the amount of vegetative buffer there, they can just modify the site plan at the time of permit application. We don't necessarily need to hold up the hearing or anything for the approval on that. We'll just have it added to make sure that that's incorporated at the permit phase.
Okay, I think that answers my question. So now, again, anyone in the public that would like to ask her a question? I'm going to get on my phone, so I can do my three-minute timer. If you would like to ask a question regarding the testimony given today, you have, you'll have to identify yourself, and you were all sworn in the other day, everyone who's here. They were sworn in the other day, so this is a continuation, so we, you all have to identify yourself, though, again, and your address.
You got it. Let me know when you're ready.
There's a switch on that might want to slide it off.
Pull that little lever up towards the...
You got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, sir.
What is your definition of minimal in terms of property value?
Well, I see minimal in that, in the studies that were done by the universities, they actually stated that it's a consensus that solar farms in their areas had not impacted property values at all.
Okay. I noticed that Minnesota was 4%, and if you have a million-dollar home, that's $40,000. Not minimal in, I guess, that aspect. I can see 4% looking as a minimal number.
Sure.
But, and then also, where was that Bull Valley map? What year was that from? Because I live directly across the street from this solar panel. I will be, my property is here, and I'm Bull Valley. So you said about a mile, the, I mean, the correct answer would be about 10 feet.
You're talking about the border to Bull Valley?
Correct. Yeah, the slide at all the estates. And then the question was, how close are you to Bull Valley? And then the answer was about a mile. So my question was, what year were you looking at the map, or what map? I think that we had the one right back with the yellow.
I think we had Page 7, Kim, in our staff report showing the current boundaries. Would that be, would that reflect the boundaries that you were thinking, sir, that the tan boundary would be Bull Valley?
Correct. Yeah, the one that was shown earlier was yellow for the property, and she said about a mile. But, in essence, I live across the street, and it's Bull Valley. But I have no more questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Sherri Shirley, 310 North Fleming Road, Woodstock, Illinois. So I just had a question before. I asked if you could say that it's 100% environmentally friendly, the solar farms? And you said you could not, and do that, but how clean will it be? Like, there are different solar panels to choose from. Some are more environmentally clean than others. So could you just tell us what your environmental solar consists of?
The solar panels that we use, I don't know if you can hear me, the solar panels, like I stated before, are made of glass, aluminum, silicone, and plastics.
Right, and hazardous materials, because all solar panels have to have hazardous materials and impurities to make the solar work. So do you know, has your company tried to be on the best part of environmental friendly?
Yes.
So could you describe how yours is higher than some of them that are sold out there?
No, I could not.
Okay. But you do know, like, your company does care to make it as most environmentally friendly as possible?
Yes.
Okay. And then, do you know how long your company has been in business?
We've been doing solar for over 30 years. Our company was initially, in the early 90s, not doing community solar, but we've been, we've been in the solar industry for over 30 years.
Okay. And are you aware that a lot of solar companies are becoming bankrupt?
We have to do it based on your testimony today. Questions based on your testimony today.
Okay. Well, I'm just wondering, is your company solid, like?
Our parent company is a publicly traded utility, so yes, I would say that we're pretty solid.
Okay. And I don't quite understand that, so let me know if I don't ask the right question. But has your company had fines, your solar farm companies? Or some companies are not doing what they said they would do?
I'm not aware of being fined for any, for any instances.
Okay. You also said you were not aware of any fires?
Correct.
Would you not know that?
A fire at a solar facility would be a pretty big deal. We would know about that, yes.
Right. Because it says 0.06% actually get fires. However, if you do get a fire, it's a huge deal. And we have, like, property and animals that live right near that area. So, am I done? Okay, thank you.
I want to tip the microphone down to you, Emily.
Do you remember that I stood up here last week and objected on behalf of the village of Bull Valley?
You have to identify yourself, Emily.
Oh, I'm sorry. Emily Verant, president of the village of Bull Valley. And I just wanted to make sure that you recall that I spoke last time against this. It's a terrible location. There are 20, 25 to 27 houses, I forget which, all residential. And the village is directly adjacent through Mr. Hall's property. Another question is, if you can do something better than arborvitus, that would be wonderful. Something a little more substantial, something a little more acceptable environmentally. Thank you.
Timothy Sebastian, 2200 Maritime Lane, Woodstock, Illinois. Actually, I'm the immediate past president of the Hartland Realtor Organization, 1,200 members in McHenry County. I serve around the executive board, so like Mr. Jurzen, our friend in the back, we know a little bit about real estate. So the appraisals, when were they completed? The appraisal reports they discussed, what years?
One appraisal was done in, let's see. The appraisals were done in 2020 and in 2022.
Okay, so 2020, 2022. Thank you. And I just reiterate, they weren't, where were they done again? What location?
The appraisals were done in Virginia, the state of Virginia. They were done in Minnesota, Wisconsin, North Carolina.
But not Illinois?
I do not have a...
And not Bull Valley, Illinois?
Correct.
And not Woodstock, Illinois?
Correct.
And with my knowledge in real estate, appraisals need to be done close to the property that is actually being appraised. That is the most important part of it. There's guidelines for appraisals that say you have to be within a certain distance to actually figure out the price of the properties. So when I make that statement, how do you justify that appraisal done out of state would match what the values of property here are?
I don't justify. This was just additional information that was asked to be provided.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Dr. New, Jeremy Shaw, prime law clerk, here on behalf of Marty Jad, the 206 North Fleming. I think I heard you say that the appraisals and the studies that you pointed to suggested that there was a minimal impact on property values, but that was dependent upon a setback. And that I think your words were, the setback was critical. Has there been any consideration to a larger setback? Say, hundreds, if not 1,000-foot setback from Fleming Road, as opposed to bringing it all the way up to the road and shielding it, screening it with hind trees?
So we're following the state and county guidelines for setbacks?
I understand that, but in light of the fact that one of the considerations under the Public Act is that there's not a large detriment to property values, and in light of the fact that the studies that you provided state that a setback is critical to minimizing the negative impact of property values, has there been consideration given, discussions had? Any plans or preliminary thoughts of increasing that setback to eliminate that?
We have not had discussions regarding additional setbacks.
Hi, my name is Joy Gantek. I'm a resident of the county, and I'm sorry to keep harping on the property values, but...
Can you give your address, please?
My address is 5708 Donovan Road and Union. I am also the CEO of a market research company called SA Market Insights, and so data is in my DNA, and I've got, I've captured a lot of it. I wanted to reference the project, the study that Mr. Eldridge mentioned from the University of Austin, which is pretty comprehensive. It's not local, but it has data in it from Illinois and from a lot of states nationwide. That particular study, I have to refer to my phone for the data, but that particular study particularly shows huge decreases of property values within 100 feet and even within 500 feet. With just a 1.5-megawatt output at 100 feet, 40% of homes experienced a significant decline. Almost 20% of those were more than 20%, 20% or higher decline. So I'm just wondering, from, I know that, I know we're harping on property values, but this is, you know, near and dear to our hearts, and it matters a lot to the community. And so what are, what are the options for getting around this? Or finding locations potentially that could be better suited, rather than butting up exactly against people's homes?
I mean, I don't really know how to answer that question. We're, we've identified that the land is good for a solar garden. We don't really take into account. You know, we follow the state and county guidelines. That's how we, that's how we identify our land.
Would it be possible to choose sites possibly differently based on the impact to the surrounding environment?
Sure. Yeah.
But that's not something you're considering at the time?
Not at this time.
Mark Newton, 1502 Marshland Way, Bull Valley. Are you aware there's a conservation easement on the property?
Yes, we are.
Are you familiar with conservation native plants?
Yes, we are.
Can I ask why you chose conifers and arbor by day?
That was what was recommended, I believe. We haven't chosen one specifically. It was just a coniferous-type tree that would help the screening in the colder months, right? Something that doesn't drop its leaves.
Are you aware, are there deer on the property?
I do not know. I would assume there are. Yes.
Do you understand that deer eat arbor by day?
I do now.
Okay. I'm limited in terms of my questions related to only her testimony today, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other follow-up questions by the board? I would just say, so you would be open to changing your arborvita to some other plant that's suitable to the village of Bull Valley and...
Absolutely. We're working very closely with the McHenry Land Conservation Group to make sure that we're seeding with native seeding. And Steve is incredibly knowledgeable with conservation, so we are happy to take the guidance of the conservancy or the county, for sure, or neighboring villages.
Okay. So that's the end of the...
Any other questions?
Oh, oh, yes.
Wasn't here before, wasn't this morning? Can I say anything, or do I have to swear?
Swear in the...
Oh, would you raise your hand, and I'll swear you in, and you can go ahead and ask questions. Do you affirm that the testimony you give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Rick LeFever, 17,000 Seaco Road, Woodstock. Just a question maybe for the engineer. I do a lot of fire stuff in the state. We can do nothing without checking the state fire marshal first, burning any product, or any toxins it might give off. So has this all been approved there was a fire? And what replaced the candium? That's maybe even what's toxic in there when it gives off, and kind of burn. And then will the local fire departments be aware of what they're dealing with? If we go over electrical fires, this is something totally different. There's a product burning off there that, like a battery, is something different.
My name is Andy Galone. I work for Civil and Environmental Consultants. I'm a civil engineer and a licensed professional engineer in the state of Illinois. Your question as far as what product was removed and replaced?
Well, if you did have a fire, you know, we had to do all of these R&amp;Ds, where if we burn anything, the stakeholders burn, just anything. So what, if there was by chance a fire? What kind of toxins would be given off, and what would that do to the soil and the community around it, the people living there?
So I'm a civil engineer. I'm not an expert in the solar panels, so I cannot answer that.
Okay. Something to think about. Does a stakeholder burn anything without approval?
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to allow the public that wants to make any comments based on the testimony today. If you get comments the other day, you know, you can't reiterate something else or something that's unrelated. We already took that testimony. But if you have a comment related to testimony today, I'm going to allow you a chance to give your comments, then. So anybody that would like to give a comment, not a question, but a comment, before we close the hearing, now's your opportunity. So anybody that wants to? Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe we should. Does Kim, do you have any comment, or?
No, I think I wrapped everything up the last time.
Hi, Sherri Shirley, 310 North Fleming Road, Woodstock, Illinois. So I just have a question before I start. Is this for both properties, or will we do the second? Is this for both properties or will we do the second property?
Second property will come after this.
Okay. And so, um, my concern is the location because it's right next to a nature preserve that's 323 acres. From my understanding, there is zero solar farms that are a hundred percent environmentally friendly. But I think that we should be smart. And we decide not to put it next to a nature preserve because it has been shown that solar panels crack and that, um, the hazardous materials that make solar work do come out with rain, snow runoff. So I'm very concerned that it is not a good location. And also I'm wondering, I think you guys are planning to come to the physical site very briefly, um, not very often. And I'm concerned that the solar panels crack in between your visits. And I wish I could ask questions here, but this is comment. And, um, I just want to make sure that you do what you say you're going to do because some co- solar companies are not doing what they said they would do. They're getting fines, but they're making more profit than the fines. So they're not really concerned. But we live here and we do work to make sure that what you guys say that you will do. And these are real people that could have real problems. And also, um, because the bankruptcy concern, there are some companies that are going out of business and it is very expensive to take a solar site down when it is done. And I want to make sure that we're not going to get stuck with that. So let me see if there's, and also I just had a comment if you addressed, but somebody said fifty to sixty percent of conditional use solar farms are not built. And I'm just wondering if this is a conditional use solar farm. So, and I have contacted state officials that, to say, I don't think that a solar farm that cannot be a hundred percent environmentally safe and friendly should be next to a nature preserve because that's kind of on both opposite ends of the spectrum. And it will not be fun to go to a nature preserve if the solar panels crack, rain, snow runoff gets into the soil, the hazardous goes on to the water supply. And in this place is also Bull Valley, um, river, eventually for drinking water.
Okay.
I wasn't sworn in before either, do it.
Okay, I'll swear you in. Do you affirm the testimony you give will be the whole truth? The, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And your name and the address?
I'm Pat Shel- Patricia Shelton, 301 North Fleming, 302 North Fleming, 303 North Fleming. I'm really, really not happy with this. I hate to see what any drawbacks or any accidents are going to do to my livestock. Um, not cows, it's horses and chickens, but, and dogs. And our, you know, the effect that any runoff could have since we're all on septic systems and wells and, and how close this is budding up. And like someone else said, it's not a mile away, it's houses away. And then as far as the trees along Fleming Road, a lot of our old oak trees and our old trees in the back that would be providing a background for, um, so we didn't have to look at the solar farms and so that the people buying our house or we ever sold wouldn't see those solar farms. Those trees are dying, they're old. They're being knocked out in storms is, that's a question. I would hope that they're going to put some thought into the backlining of our, putting trees along the back of our properties if this hor- if this project goes through.
You can pull that out if you want to.
The secret?
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Um, Nick Hall, 110 North Fleming Road, Bull Valley. A couple of just concerns. Again, as a real estate agent, property value is a huge one. I know you stated in, uh, Mr. Eldridge, in the findings that it did not significantly affect property value. The basic question to anybody would be, would you want a solar panel farm if you looked out your front door? Is that going to affect your property value? I mean, a hundred percent. I had stated last time that homes with antennas or power lines visible are usually down ten to fifteen percent in Illinois. Um, so that's one. As well, a concern is we keep using the term tree line. And I live directly across, you walk out my front door, you have about two acres or so of my front yard, and then you have the property in question. And it's not a tree line, it's a bunch of invasive, I don't know what they're called, buckthorns or whatever. And it's completely open from about November to towards the end of April. So there really is not a tree line. It's just really tall weeds that kind of go in and out. So there will be no coverage pretty much for that. But yeah, my main concern is, like I said, property value and things of that nature. Thank you.
Timothy Sebastian, 2200 Maritime Lane, Woodstock, Illinois. A question about the conservation, or not question, comment about the conservation easement. Has it been entered into the record? The actual document? Is it entered into this record for future reference? Should there be any litigation or when it goes to the county board? It's, it was filed in 2007, it's 45 pages. Has anyone, has this actually entered into any record of last time in a month or today that this exists? We discussed it. And my concern would be that when we had the hearing last month, staff said they only learned about this, I think she said three days before that hearing. So is this in the record anywhere?
It's a public record.
It's a public, yes, quite a public record. And everyone knows about it.
Is it entered in this record for this hearing? Is there anywhere that if, if a week or two weeks or two months, someone were to sit down and read everything and see what happened here, that, that this would be part of the record?
Well, that easement is yours regardless of anything that happens here today.
I understand that, but is, is it in the, I mean, you may think it's here it goes, but later on it could, it could be something that is quite substantial. So are you telling me it's not in the record?
If it was not submitted as an exhibit, then it was not a, a part of the formal record. It was identified. So if somebody wanted to look it up through the recorder's office, it would be available, but nobody submitted it as a petition or as an exhibit.
So how do you submit it? Why, why is it not submitted?
You can do that now as an objector's exhibit.
I will happily do that. And who do I submit it? How do I go about that?
Right here, just hand it over and we'll make sure it's a part of the file.
Okay, we will label this. I don't know how many other exhibits that we have. Objectors exhibit number one.
Yeah. And at the last hearing, you said you were going to get a opinion from the state's attorney's office. Will we hear that?
Kim, can you update us on what we heard here?
Yeah, so the state's attorney's office, as far, are you talking about for conditions that can be placed?
I'm talking about the, the conservation easement.
Yes, um, so because that is something that is between the land conservancy and, um, the applicant or property owner, that is something that we do not have the ability to put into our conditions. Um, so that would be something that they would need to come to terms with separately.
I have no idea what you just said.
So the, the approval-
And I'm not being out of order, but when, when we left the last meeting, Madam Chairman said, I, I want an opinion from the state's attorney's office. So are you saying that we're not getting an opinion from the state's attorney's office?
So, no.
Because the objectors that I just said, said she didn't want any of this.
You would need to let her answer.
Okay.
What the state's attorney's office has indicated to us is that we can place whatever conditions we feel are appropriate, but ultimately it is up to the county board at that level for them to take off or add conditions that are actually okay. Um, and the state's attorney's office will review that at that time. So we can put whatever conditions, you know-
But I didn't ask about conditions. I'm asking about the conservation easement that was entered in 2007 by the landowner or-
Yes, and now you have entered, and you have entered that as your objection. So, uh, we have a copy of that easement.
What is the opinion that you're asking for on that?
What, what the state's attorney's office opinion was about the conservation easement.
It's unrelated to the zoning, so if we're going to-
And whether, whether or not it would allow for solar panels.
That was not part of our state's attorney's opinion. That was something that we were trying to find out if we could condition it, condition the approval based off of that agreement. And that is something that, as I mentioned, we can put that condition on there. It may get taken off when it gets to the county.
I apologize that I must have misunderstood because I thought when we left you, ma'am, that it asked for the opinion of the state's attorney's office, whether in fact the easement, um, the conservation easement would allow for panels or not. And you're saying you didn't mean that.
No, that is not the opinion that we needed from the state's attorney's office.
Jeremy Shaw, prime law, uh, on behalf of Marty Jadd, 206 North Fleming. Uh, I would just note that, um, I think as stated before, I don't envy the position this board is in. Your hands are pretty well tied, but I will cite you a section out of the Public Act which comes from 55 ILCS 5/5, 1202L. And it simply states that the county may require certain vegetative screening. That's a pretty broad statement. I would encourage this board to make generous recommendations in terms of setbacks and screening. And by setbacks, I think we can imply setbacks from the required screening. I, I, I don't see a prohibition in doing that. And I know we are on the cutting edge of, the, the tip of the spear is probably the better way of looking at this because these cases are going to be fast and furious while this legislation remains unchanged. But I would encourage this board to be bold when it comes to, to making attempts to limit these to protect the surrounding property owners. And I think that is your job. You know that's your job. You, you do a good job at it. I've seen it for years. And this is a case where you have the ability to test the limits of what the legislature intended when they said certain screening requirements. There is no limitation that I see. Be bold, protect those property owners. Employ some generous screening to protect them and the values of their property.
I wasn't sworn in.
Okay. Do you affirm the testimony you give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Do you need us to lower that or else you just? Down below, you can kind of loosen that and then it'll lower. Perhaps the tall gentleman.
I'm a little confused about this conservation easement. Uh, I'm at 104 Queen Anne Road and I have 58 acres under conservation. And it would seem to me that when this was signed with the original grantor who signed the easement, uh, that should still be enforced. I mean, if somebody else buys a property, I don't think this easement should change. I mean, and I don't know exactly what's in her easement, but mine, uh, well, it goes on and on. Grantor intends to achieve certain purposes, the conservation purposes, including the preservation of the conservation values of the property by continuation of land use patterns existing at the time of this grant and in general, the preservation of the scenic vista afforded by the property in its present open space condition and of the natural plan and animal communities and scenic areas in the region in which the property is located. And it goes on and on. But basically that's what this other person signed. And I don't think just because somebody else purchases the property that that should all change. Thank you.
Any other comments? So at this time, we will, any closing statement on the part of the petitioner?
No.
Okay, so at this time, we will close the testimony part of this hearing and we will move to the voting portion of this hearing. We have, again, this is for petition 2023-025. Uh, the applicant is Wildcat Solar One LLC. The request is a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial solar energy facility. The PIN number is 08-34-400-008. The address is North Fleming Road, Woodstock. Property consists of roughly 43 acres located on the west side of North Fleming Road, one half mile north of the intersection of Route 120 and North Fleming Road in Greenwood Township. Proposed conditions, number one, the conditional use shall have no time limit unless the use is abandoned as specified in 16.56.030.PP.4 of McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance. Number two, site development shall be in substantial conformance with the site plan prepared by New Energy Equity, dated June 14, 2023. Number three, decommissioning plan shall be applicable in part as well as whole if any portion of the commercial solar energy facility ceases to perform its intended function for more than 12 consecutive months. That portion of the facility shall be decommissioned in compliance with all the terms of the decommissioning plan. Number four, a McHenry County stormwater management permit shall be secured prior to construction. Any damaged drain tiles shall be repaired at the expense of the petitioner and in a manner satisfactory to the Water Resources Division Manager. Number five, a detailed landscape plan illustrating compliance with required landscape screening standards shall be approved by the zoning enforcement officer prior to issuance of construction slash building permit. Number six-
Madam Chairman, I'd like to propose a change to condition five.
Go ahead, Mr. Eldridge.
Yes, I would like to change it with a detailed landscape plan providing, uh, as extensive setbacks and as, uh, extensive, uh, screening from adjacent properties uh, as, uh, the Department of Planning, uh, believes is enforceable under the current state law after consultation with the state's attorney will be required, uh, and shall meet requires landscape screening standards by the zoning enforcement officer.
Sir, second?
I will second, if I can add to that, that the screening be non-decisive type. In other words, not losing its leaves.
Absolutely, yes.
Then I will second it.
Discussion, Mr. Eldridge?
Uh, well, I'm, uh, following the suggestion by Mr. Shaw, uh, at least as closely as I can. Uh, I think that we should have as deep screening because there's so many homes around this area as possible. And if we can enforce a further setback, we should do so. Uh, though I think we are obligated to conform to state law.
Does any other discussion, Mr. Schnappel, you want to add any?
I agree with what Mr. Eldridge has just said.
Any other discussion? Mr. Cozen?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The, um, the discussion of screening and the discussion of a easement um, goes hand in hand in terms of future appearance such that there shouldn't be indistinguishable for those who may walk, drive, or bicycle down Fleming Road to denote that it is here where there is a solar fan farm and there is here where there is not a solar farm. And so the characteristic of Fleming Road should not be diminished or changed or in any way by some new use or augmentation of some mechanical use. And so therefore I understand the direction of this screening, of argument.
Any other comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I'm not going to try and restate Mr. Eldridge's motion, but Kim, do you have any comments on that?
Uh, just to reiterate that the state allows for us to add that vegetative screening and no limitation has been set by the state. So whether there's a specific width, um, of that buffer or if it's left to staff to, you know, review the detailed landscape plan when it comes in and determine at that time, um, we certainly can do that. Yeah, and it would still be within the state's regulation.
Okay, so Mr. Eldridge's motion was leaving it to the discretion of staff as extensive as you can, as you can do. Are you comfortable with that or do you want us to do more detail?
It would probably be better to have a specific, whether it's a number of rows or width of screening, um, to leave it to staff. I'm not sure if that's something that we can do unless you want to just have it stated as the landscape plan. Well, it's kind of how it's stated already is that it needs to be approved by the zoning enforcement officer. Um, I'm not really sure if you want to add any language specific to how much or how dense of screening.
Kim, just a little bit, if you have to screen visiting-
Screen visibility would be too low.
I think that what Mr. Cozen said is what we're going for, which is that we want Fleming Road to look so no one will be able to tell that there's something different behind that screening versus any other part of Fleming Road.
And I think that's fine. I think staff can make the determination based off of the landscape plan that will be submitted at the time of permitting.
Okay. So I don't need to give you specific language now on this? What you have in the recording will be sufficient.
No, we'll listen back on the transcript.
Okay. Okay, so we'll take a motion on Mr. Eldridge's change to number five. All those in favor, please, well, let's just go by vote. Let's just go. So this is changing number five. So, Mr. Jurz, are you in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel, Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Okay, so number, and I'll vote yes, so number five changes to what is amended by Mr. Eldridge. Okay, moving on. Number six, fencing shall be provided in compliance with the National Electrical Code as applicable. The use of our wire is prohibited. Setting fence posts in concrete is prohibited except for gate posts and where otherwise required for stability. Number seven, all requirements of McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance 16.56.030.PP. as amended, subject to the State of Illinois Public Act 102-1123, shall be met or exceeded unless specifically amended by this conditional use permit. Number eight, all other federal, state, and local laws shall be met. Are there any other proposed conditions? And I would take a motion on the conditions.
I move acceptance of the conditions as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved by Mr. Gardner, seconded by, or moved by Mr. Eldridge, seconded by Ms. Gardner. Discussion, Mr. Eldridge.
Nothing further to add.
Okay, any other discussion on the conditions? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. And I just realized, I'm so sorry to the petitioner, I have to tell you that there's only six of us here today, and you are entitled to seven votes. And do you want to proceed with six?
Yes.
Okay. I'm so sorry, I didn't bring that up earlier. Okay, so conditions are approved six to zero. We will move on to the petition itself. I would entertain a motion on the petition.
I move acceptance of the petition, subject to the conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Eldridge.
As I've said in the other petitions, I believe that this petitioner has met the state standards. The, there are substantial objectors to this petition. As I've been listening, I've really heard three categories of objection, that there, people are concerned that their property values will be diminished. There were some people who were concerned about fire safety and environmental contamination. And then finally, people were, I think particularly concerned about screening along Fleming Road. In the, I might add that Mr. Jurz has several times said that he feels this amounts to a zoning change. I sympathize with that position, but the county has established a policy that they want on solar farms, conditional uses without a time limit. So since that is the county policy, I, as being a member of this board, I accept that. The, in my view, I read extensively on this. I've been in the real estate development business for a very long time. I've looked at the studies. I think they're good academic studies that are national, and you can twist and turn them, but mostly, they just show no impact unless you're right on top of them and they're highly visible. If we're screening this, as I believe we are, I do not believe that there will be significant impact on property values. Likewise, we have seen a lot of these petitions, and we have received an awful lot of testimony, not just from this petitioner, but from many, many others, on safety, both in terms of potential for fire and environmental contamination. And we've heard a lot of experts on that subject. And the testimony has been really quite overwhelming, that these just aren't really very serious concerns. They just don't happen. And so I don't give much weight to that. Finally, I think we have addressed, at least as well as we can, the screening issue. And I think that if staff does its usual excellent job of following our rules and putting in the screening that we have indicated that we desire, so that Fleming Road, to people walking by or driving by, can't tell the difference, and people living nearby can't tell the difference without going through the screening to look at it, that the change in the character of the area because of looks will become a non-issue. I think we've successfully dealt with that. Now, my understanding of the law is even if we didn't feel we met those things, we were still obligated to approve this petition. But I think that we have addressed them, and therefore, I'm more comfortable, I think, in voting in favor of this than I have been several others, and I will support the petition.
Mr. Cozen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I more than most appreciate a good adage, especially one that characterizes the zoning board of appeals to being on the edge of a spear, and also sometimes being the shield. But in this particular instance, it is more so like the rock in the hard place. And for that, there is the comfort of the law. And with that comfort comes the standards in the conditional use. And the conditional use cites that in terms of discussion of property values, it must substantially diminish and impair the property values. And those numbers are far greater than what we have before us, whether from the applicant or from the objectors. But more so, in looking at the law, is the state law, which is the first citation under the zoning ordinance of this county, 55 ILCS 5/5-1200, which is the source of our being here today. And when strayed, the county, the state has already demonstrated to all 102 counties that it can diminish that authority, both by legislative action and by the action of the governor. In addition, it is the law, at least to be determined by the state's attorney, that private agreements under the ordinance, the county does not enforce private agreements, easements, covenants, or restrictions. Given those limitations, I will be supporting this petition.
Ms. Gardner.
I appreciate the comments of my fellow board members. My concern is with real estate values. And I have to say that I do agree that, I'm not going to call it a solar garden. I just, I'm sorry, I just can't do that. That a solar facility will not substantially diminish property values. And I am really hopeful that the screening that can be put into place is going to really erase the vision of those residents that live alongside this, so that they don't think about this, they don't, they don't feel it, they don't hear it, they don't smell it, they don't, nothing. That it's just not there for them because it's invisible behind heavy, heavy screening. So I'm very encouraged by that, and I am going to be voting in favor because we are between a rock and a hard place.
Mr. Schn.
I just want to say that we could talk about all the screening that we want to, but I think common sense would tell us that when that screening gets planted initially, it's not going to completely densely cover the agricultural fence that's going to surround these solar farms. It's really meant to mitigate the appearance, at least initially. And you're going to have to more than likely wait five or 10 years for this stuff to hopefully grow and mature. I just wanted to point that out. Other than that, I don't disagree with anything anyone has said to date on this matter. I largely support the petition at this time.
Mr. Jurz.
Thank you. Charlie Eldridge and I are usually on the same page. He's really good with words. He's a wordsmith. This time, Charlie, we're going to agree to disagree. There's no time limit that's, you know, for the lawyers to worry about, but I still say it's a, and the application has the word "commercial solar facility", which you're putting on an agricultural piece of ground, which is 43 acres. I've seen these, I've been, I've been promoting what they did formerly called solar gardens, which were only one make. This thing is five makes. This is a large piece of property. I feel for the people in the audience here that are the neighbors. And the mayor of Bull Valley is here, and she's, their city limits are across the street from this facility. The conservation easement, I was under the opinion that those go like forever, but again, I'm not the attorney. Also, the fire district and every one of the surrounding properties is on a well. I don't believe Bull Valley has any municipal water, am I right, Madam Mayor? So we've got a dozen wells, the stones throw from this. So for those several reasons that I just mentioned, I'm voting no. Thank you.
Okay, and I would say that I agree with Mr. Eldridge and Mr. Cozen's comments about the studies that we have seen and all the hearings that we have gone through on solar farms regarding safety, regarding property values, that I think we are doing all within our power, that we have the power to do, given the state regulations, to minimize any impact on surrounding property owners with our conditions that we have proposed. And so I am grateful for that, that we can do what we can do. But otherwise, I believe this meets the standards, that the state has the minimum state standards. And so I will, I don't, I don't feel that there's any other thing I can do but vote yes. So I will be voting yes for this as well. So I will be calling for the vote, Mr. Eldridge.
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
No.
And I will vote yes. So this will go to the county board with a five to one vote for approval. So now just give me a minute, and we'll move on to our last petition.
Are we able to take a quick pause?
Sure.
Sure. We're going to take a little.